Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, February 28th. It is 5:00. The City of Bastrop will be going into executive session. We have a full quorum, full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. Our executive session, I think, Council, this may be one of the longest ones we've ever had, so relax as I read all this. We will be going into executive session to discuss the following items. City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss potential acquisition of real estate relating to the Simsboro Aquifer Water Treatment Plant, Well Field, and Transmission Facilities Project. Item 2B, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a support services agreement and policy for the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and related matters. Item 2C, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss potential acquisitions of real estate relating to the Agnes Street and Vista Pointed Drive right-of-way's and related infrastructure and other miscellaneous property. Item 2D, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and consider amendment to an existing development agreement concerning the Colorado Bend Project. Item 2E, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel related to matters regarding the inter-local agreement with Bastrop County, related to development review in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, also known as the 1445 Agreement, and other areas necessary to the City of Bastrop. Item 2F, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel to discuss a proposed development located at 1408 Chestnut. Item 2G, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to discuss the extension of a lease and deliberate the related terms of a new agreement for real property located in Fisherman's Park. It is 5:02 and we are in executive session. Okay, it is 6:28 and we are back in regular session. And to give you guys some information, looks like people are giving me some information too up here. We are, there are some items that we're going to take action on, and so I'm going to go through each one of the executive session items and let you guys know what the status of those are. On item 2A, I believe we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R2023-36.
I have a motion for Resolution 2023-36 from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
This is Mayor Protem Rogers. Meet the City Secretary.
We're getting off to a great start. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The resolution passes unanimously. It has been a busy, busy week. We have kept our secretary really hopping. All right, on item 2B, Council has started a discussion, but we will be going back into executive session to finish the discussion on 2B, so there'll be no action at this time, but there may be action by the end of the, the real end of the meeting. On item 2C, I believe I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number R-2023-37 and Resolution Number R-2023-38.
Council, I have a motion from Mayor Protem Rogers?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. You are voting on Resolutions 2023-37 and 2023-38. Everybody clear on what they're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Now, we're on item 2D. This is in regard to the Colorado Bend Project. We do not have a finalized document. We are planning a meeting next week. It may very likely be on Tuesday, but we don't know for sure, but we will certainly do the proper 72-hour notice for that meeting. And our intention of doing that is we will have an agreement that the public will have an opportunity to review, and that council will have clarity on that, and we'll take action then. So that'll be a meeting next week. There'll be no action as a result of today. The same thing is true on item 2E regarding the 1445 with the county. I'd like to give a special shout-out to both their county engineer and Commissioner Beckett. The city manager and I have spent a lot of time with them over the last couple of weeks, and we are extremely close and very sure that we're going to be able to get that worked out, and that will be on the agenda for next week. On item 2F, there is no action as a result of executive session. And on item 2G regarding the lease in Fisherman's Park, that's also a lease that will be finalized and posted, and we will take action on that next week. Council, I think that's all of them. Everybody cool? So we are done with item number three. We have taken the appropriate actions as a result of executive session. It is 6:32. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. And I am, I usually come and introduce myself. I'm so sorry that one of you, I'm hoping, is Claire Colepepper. Come on up here, Claire, and turn around so everyone can smile at you and know who you are. You are on the Student Council at Cedar Creek Intermediate, correct? And you have with you Hannah. Is that you, Hannah? Hannah, say your last name. Knoblick?
Knoblick.
Knoblick. I had a 50/50 chance there. All right, and you too are on Student Council. And have you guys been, is this your first year to be on Student Council? Do you like it? Excellent. That's a, that's a way to get involved in municipal government. What's your favorite subject? Reading? That's okay. That's allowed. What's your favorite subject? Social studies? All right. Well, then you're all about the public. Is this your first time to be in council chambers?
No.
No, you're an expert. Excellent. Well, then you know that the ladies and gentlemen in the audience are going to stand up, and we are all going to say the pledges together. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise. These young people will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
They did a great job. Let's give them a round of applause. Stay up here. Colin's going to take your picture. Colin's going to take your picture, and parents may want to too, so. Let's give them another round of applause, and thank you to their parents, too. If you will please remain standing. We are so blessed to have Reverend Long with us tonight, and he is going to give our invocation. Reverend Long?
Yes, let us pray. Father God, as we come before you, we come in Jesus' name, believing that you will be present here tonight to guide this meeting. I pray for the mayor and the council that you would give them wisdom and discernment to make the right and righteous decisions to lead our city. We've been a blessed city because of prayer and good people elected to office. We pray for the upcoming elections. We pray for righteousness to be in our council. We pray for those council members that are coming on, those that are on. We pray for all the facets of our city. Lord, we thank you for our city manager and our city secretary and, and those in the offices of this building, but we pray for those who are out working on city projects, good weather or bad weather, and we thank you for a beautiful day today in Bastrop. We thank you for our police department and our fire department, those who watch for us and keep us safe. Thank you for all first responders. Now, we thank you for the meeting tonight, that you will let it be peaceful and efficient, and you will get the glory, and it's in your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Long. Do you want to mention your Bastrop Ministerial Alliance event?
Yes, on May the 14th, we, March, thank you, thank you. March 14th, we have the Mayor's Prayer Lunch. We've been doing this for 37 years. It started as a breakfast. We moved it to the lunch and filled the city across the street, our convention center, and we hope to do that again, and a farewell to our mayor, kind of, at that time. We're glad to have had you, Mayor. You're not gone.
Thank you very much. And you, you made, helped with the special arrangements of the guest speaker. Do you want to mention who that is?
Yes. Bunny Pounds is a friend. She is a lady who has a unique way of getting people, well, Christians. This is a faith lunch, getting Christians involved in the government system without saying Democrat or Republican. And I think it's going to be outstanding if you read her when you're, if you're there. Her bio is there. It's tremendous. People from all over the country are having her to help people get involved. It's called Christians Engaged. And so, good. It's, that's the speaker. I will not be there that day.
But where will you be?
I'm on a plane to Israel, taking a group of people from Bastrop and other places. We have three busloads of people. And so y'all can pray for us that day, but I'll be on a video supposedly. We'll see how that works, so. Have a good day. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Pastor Long. All right, Council, we're going to go to, Colin, we're going to go to the mayor's report. I have one here somewhere. Before we start the mayor's report, I do want to let everybody know that you may have seen some postings from Parks and Recreation, Walk Across Texas Starts Tomorrow Morning. It is March 1st through April 26th, and the goal is for the team to walk 832 miles in eight weeks. And you have eight people. There's a recurring theme there. So, kind of a cool thing. It's free to join, just trying to inspire people. Of course, these days, we don't know if you need a jacket or a swimsuit because the, the way the weather's going all over, but it's always good to be outside. So I want to make sure people get signed up for that. Colin, we can jump in, and I'm going to go really fast. We have a long agenda tonight. One of the coolest things I've ever been to, upper left-hand corner, Colin, when you go to McCoy's for ribbon cutting, they don't cut a ribbon, they saw a board. How cool is that? So that is their manager Nicole, and she was sawing a board. I wanted her to have a power saw. She said that the HR people wouldn't let her do that, so I don't know what was up with that, but it was a really neat opening. And they have 7,000 more products, and they're focusing on do-it-yourself, and they have dog food, and have changed the layout, and really encouraging folks to come check out the Bastrop McCoy's. So I'd like to encourage you to do that. Just below that is a picture of the folks that got the mini-grants from the cultural arts organization, and they were very excited, and that was a picture at the gathering. It was really neat for everybody to be together. And just below that is Bastrop County Day at the Capitol, and we're there with Representative Gertis and Senator Shortner. And then in the middle is a picture where I was at the Hearts and Handbags to support the Children's Advocacy Center, and then I'm with Stacy Braden, who is the owner of Gravity District. That was for Alive After Five. The upper right-hand corner is Hot Works, because if you are time-limited, you should go work out where it's 110 degrees. And if you work out for 15 minutes in the 110 degrees, it's the same calories that you burn in an hour on a treadmill, and because you have your inside so hot, you continue to burn calories for the following hour. So if you are time-pressed, they want you to go work out in the heat. No, I didn't do it. Just below that, there was the ribbon cutting for Kids Rockin' Mom, and she has a great facility at her home, and there were several of her clients that were there with her. And then we have our rock star council member. Councilmember Cheryl Lee was in the Steelaway Home, and there's a picture of her live onstage opening night, and appreciate her being a part of the event. Colin, if you go to the next page, this is everything I was supposed to do, and I did. And if you go to the page after that, you'll see all the things I'm doing between now and March 28th. A couple of things just to bring to everybody's attention. March 11th is the Bastrop County Empty Bowl Event, which is one of my favorites of all year, so make sure you get your ticket for that, so you can get your bowl and go check out all of the different soups. And Pastor Long already mentioned the prayer lunch on March 14th. And on March 22nd, the Smithville Workforce Training Center is having a county event. The Smithville Workforce Training Center got a federal grant, and if you are a resident of Bastrop, you are eligible for free training. And all you have to do is sign up, and they've got several different fields. I would encourage you to check out their website, and you, in six, eight, 12 weeks, you can have your certification, and they cover a number of fields, and it is absolutely 100% free. So kind of hard to beat that price. With that, I have, and I do keep track, and I go in reverse order and make sure that I don't ever pick the same person first or last, and first tonight is Councilmember John Kirkland.
Why, thank you, Mayor. So since the council meeting, I attended the gathering along with several of us here as well, as the liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission, also as the liaison to the Parks Board, attended the Parks Board meeting and the joint meeting that we had with council to discuss the Parks Master Plan upcoming. So on Thursday, we had a little bit of juggling, but ultimately, I'm going to be the emcee for Farm Street Opry again this month. I had a blast last month, so I'm looking forward to that. And then for the first Friday Art Walk, I'll be manning a table with the Parks Board Chair to talk to citizens about the Parks Master Plan and the event that we have coming up to kick that off with the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Good evening, Bastrop. So I attended the various workshops and meetings that I was obligated to attend, and I'm looking forward to the TML Mid Conference, which starts tomorrow. A little mini-vacation. I sat in virtually with the Sit with Sil, and if you are interested in knowing what's going on in our community and you have questions, Sitting with Sil is better than social media. So I encourage you to sit with Sil the next Tuesday that it's offered. Lot of great questions, a lot of great dialogue. I listened to it while I worked and didn't interfere and just enjoyed the conversation. So I hope the community is aware that that is available to them, and we'll take advantage of that. So I was in Steelaway Home. My acting career is over. I feel like we did a wonderful job. I want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Plunkett for coming to see. Various staff members were in the audience. I got flowers. Lots of friends and support from the community came out to enjoy that play, and I'm very thankful the Opera House took it on. I too attended the gathering event at the Lost Pines Arts Center, hosted by the Cultural Arts Commission. It was wonderful. I, I always get to these things and be like, okay, I'm just going to stay 30 minutes and say hi, and then I was literally kicked out of the building by the time it was over with. So enjoy that and looking forward to more events at the Arts Center. And then finally, I attended the memorial for Ed and Dorothy Skarnulis. I personally did not know Ed and Dorothy. However, many people in my circle talked about going to the memorial, and I saw a lot of it on social media, so I was like, I want to go and spend time with, at this memorial with people that I know who were mourning the loss of people they loved. I wish that I knew them. After listening to the speeches and looking at the photos and people talking about them, I, I really feel like, had I known Ed and Dorothy, I would have had additional mentors in this community to help me on my journey in life. So I regret that I did not get to know them, but to all of those who did and the family members, I talked to the family members. I'm very, very sorry for your loss, but it was a beautiful memorial. It's the way that I would want to go with people, just sitting in a room, remembering the good times, and it was very well done. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I wasn't able to attend the memorial because I was unable to get out of bed and didn't think it was a good idea to bring my germs to the event. All right, Councilmember Crouch?
Just, I got to attend a couple of workshops and a council meeting since last time. Main Street Board hasn't met yet, so I didn't get to do that. I want to remind everybody that April 29th, the MS 150 Charity Bike Ride is coming through the center of Bastrop, and expect a couple of thousand bike riders. I've, I've ridden it eight times myself, three in Texas and five in Utah and Idaho on the border, and it's a very well-put-on event. It comes right through the middle of Bastrop, and it's a, it's a good opportunity for Bastrop to show our true colors and how friendly we are to thousands of bike riders, and not just on April the 29th, because you can't just jump on a bike and ride 150 miles in one day. So everybody that's riding it is going to be training in and around Bastrop because we have all the hills. Part of the route is through Bastrop State Park and Butcher State Park, and so there's going to be a ton of people here, and it's a really good opportunity to make an impression to a lot of people. Fayetteville, for me, because it used to go Houston to Austin, and you would go through Fayetteville, has the best citizens participating in an event like that. They had bubble machines, the high school bands, people standing on the side of the road yelling and cowbells and stuff, and I challenged everybody in Bastrop to do that for these people, because it's a great event and a great cause to do that. So, and then the Parks Survey is coming out on March the 6th. I, for the life of me, I can't remember the name of the venue downtown at the new food truck.
The Food Court.
But please go there and please fill out the survey. We will, we will never, Chestnut Grove Food Truck Court, on March the 6th, 5:30 to 7:30, at 710 Chestnut Street. If, if you don't fill out the survey, you can't complain about what we don't have in our parks, or we don't have a recreation center, or we don't have a swimming pool. So fill out the survey, give everybody your opinion, and you've got an opportunity to do that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. All right, Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, y'all pretty well covered everything that I did. I did go to Sportsman's this weekend and wanted to congratulate them for their great event that they had, and all the money that they raised for the schools. It's a great cause, great event. You know, they really know how to do it right. And yeah, for the interest of brevity, I'll call that tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes, Mayor, just a clarification on your report, that the activity in Smithville, that's for everybody in Bastrop County.
Every, all you have to do is be a resident of Bastrop County. Thank you for clarifying that.
Our town and our county is the same, just making sure.
Anywhere in the county.
Yeah, just want to make sure. I attended all my different meetings that I was supposed to go to on your ribbon cutting, the Hot Works. My husband thought that was going to be a hot noodle place when I start coming. He was all disappointed. He thought I was going to get some spicy food, and I was like, no, you have to go work out. But other than that, the week was good, and I look forward to TML with you.
Thank, I was going to say, I don't, I didn't remember seeing Cliff, but maybe it was because he was looking for noodles.
He found out you had to work out. He wanted a noodle.
All right, Councilmember Kirkland, you went first, and you still aren't done?
I'm sorry. I wanted to comment on the event for the Parks Master Plan rollout. This is the initial citizen rollout, where we're going to be presenting the information to the people of Bastrop. This is what, what councilperson Crouch just mentioned, on March 6th at the food truck park, 5:30 to 7:30. But the one piece that was, that was missing is that if you come and you fill out the Parks Master Plan website right there on-site, you'll get a $2 coupon that you can use to purchase food at the food trucks. So that's the piece I wanted to add.
Excellent. Thank you for taking care of that. All right, we are going to hear from our city manager. We're on item 7C. Ms. Creo?
Busy council. It has been a very, very, very short and busy month. Everybody has mentioned the Parks and Rec and Open Space Master Plan. I can't impress enough on the audience and the folks at home. This is really going to dictate how Bastrop grows in the form of outside entertainment, right? Where we are outside, how we keep our healthy lifestyle, and the places we call home, all of the open spaces that make Bastrop so wonderful to live. And it really will leave your mark on how we grow in the future. So please come join us. We are launching a new initiative called the Balancing Act. It is a citizen input for the budget priorities. We have pushed budget priorities back about a month to allow residents to have the opportunity to have some input in the budget before it comes to the council. Often, the residents are only mentioned when you're already in a budget workshop, and by that time, some of the hard decisions have already been hammered out, and we're at the point of just having public hearings. I really want to engage the residents so they can really tell us what should be driving the budget and what's important to them. We do have a draft that we'll be putting out to the council for you to have some commentary and some changes that you want to see. It is centered around the focus areas that are in the budget, so watch out for that in the next couple of weeks. We are doing movies in the park. It is a date night, and it is in Bob Bryan Park. Luckily, it's in my backyard, but I'm not sure I'll get to take a date. Our schedules are so busy. It's How to Lose a Guy in 10 Days. I've been married twice, so I know how to do that. First United Methodist Church will be providing the childcare, so I don't know that How to Lose a Guy in 10 Days is appropriate for children, but I didn't pick it. You guys mentioned Sit with Sylvia. Yes, we had four attendees this week. It was, man, it was a, a pretty quick meeting with a lot of very good topics. We talked about everything from the Emergency Services District and city participation to West Bastrop, it says West Bastrop Grove, but it's West Bastrop Village, which is a proposed development. We talked about sidewalk mobility and connectivity, and we talked about the ever-popular development process, trying to make it easier to do work in Bastrop for our residents. March the 20th, it is, these are held on the third Monday of every month, and my goal is to alternate morning and evening to allow folks to be able to participate. The next one is going to be held March the 20th at 6:30 at the Senior Center. So we will have coffee and some light snacks. I provide you dinner, but you'd have to share mine. April 17th, we will do it early morning at the library, and the goal is May and June to have it in other areas of town to try to spread the wealth. We also have our State of the City coming up and our roast of Mayor Schrader toward the end of March, so if you haven't gotten your tickets, please do so. It is a very great cause. The dollars that are collected will go back into our community funds that are distributed and help all of our nonprofits and all of our partners. So I put a March meeting up there. I know that we canceled spring break, but we have some very, very, very heavy items that need to get done. There's a couple of grants that need approval. There's a couple of agreements that we talked about today in executive session, so the city secretary will be polling you on a date, and I'm hopeful that it's March 7th so that you can have spring break off and we can get things done in an orderly fashion. We do anticipate bringing the DEI Work Plan, an extension to the Solid Waste Contract, the wastewater treatment plan, ordinances amending the budget because we did have some monies that need to be moved, several engineering and CIP projects, and you will, you should have an update on the development process from our consultant. I do have a draft report that staff and I will be going through, and so we will be sharing that at some point very shortly with the council, as well as our proposed work plan, moving forward with some potential dates and items to resolve.
It just continues. It's just going to be a long month.
Lots of capital projects. So, and that's, that's what I have today.
Thank you so much, city manager. Council, any questions for the city manager on her report? All right, we are moving on to item 7D, the quarterly report. Back to you, Ms. Creo.
Mayor, and I'm okay if you want to open citizen comments prior to this report, or if you want to go ahead?
Excellent. All right. Council, we're going to jump over Council, we're going to jump over to page three and I have some folks signed up for comments and I have one person signed up for citizen comments, so I will call that first. And I want to make available, there are four people signed up for item 12G. And 12G is the Development Agreement Amendments for Colorado Bend. And as I've told you guys, as a result of executive session, we won't be voting on that tonight because we don't have a written document for us to look at. But you've come, so if you want and you don't want to wait till 12G, I'm not kicking you out. You are welcome to stay with us all night long. But I will give you an opportunity, if you want to speak at citizens' comments, you can have an opportunity to speak earlier, but you don't have to. So, just giving you the heads up on that. All right, so the first person that I have signed up to speak, and I'll remind all of the speakers that I need you to state your name, your address, and Colin will have the timer going for you. The first person who signed up to speak is Roger W. Henderson. Mr. Henderson, if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Roger W. Henderson, Bastrop, Texas, 78602 M L K Drive. I'm here tonight to ask the city council and the mayor to place on the agenda two items. Those two items that I'm requesting are citizens, police oversight committee, okay? And the basis of that request is that our police department has two distinct officers that are federal defendants that have been promoted to sergeant while they're still defendants, okay? Those police officers took an active part in filing false reports and those four false reports has now entered into the judicial system and now being covered up by our court judicial systems. Blas Corr, who's also the municipal judge, okay? For two years, it was requested by him for Chapter 16, examining trial. That was never done by law. That's another due process violation. So, I'm asking that to be placed on the agenda so I can show the department, city council, that we have need a police community oversight in this county, okay? The second item I'm asking to be placed on the agenda is for a community oversight judicial committee. Now, we all know that we can't tell judges what to do, but there are other avenues that we can take as citizens to make sure that the judicial system is working properly for our community. Right now, it's not. We have a municipal court, we have a district court, we have a district clerk, county clerk. Those items are not working independent of each other. I'm a witness to that, where you have the district attorney calling to the district clerk's office saying, don't file that document. You have a district clerk's office calling the district attorney's office saying, should I file this document or not? They have ministerial duties as clerks to file every document that comes through. If it's proper, the county clerk's office is doing the same thing. They had a recent deal where a law officer, I won't call that law officer's name, filed documents saying there's no wheel. It was presented to the county clerk's office, there were in fact a wheel. They didn't report it, they did nothing in that process. So, we, we have a process in Bastrop where the judicial system should work for all citizens. So, I'm asking it to be placed on the, on the agenda, Mayor, so I can bring that evidence and prove to the city council that we have a need for those permissions. Citizens oversight on the policing because of the false reports have filed, been filed and have entered into the grand jury process and a judicial oversight committee. I'm not going to call the judge's name, but I will tell you that Judge Ben Askew, his court functions properly. Judge Cindy Allen, her court functions properly. Other courts in Bastrop, I won't call their names, doesn't. So, I'm asking that to be placed on the agenda. If I could talk to whoever I need to talk to to try to get that item on the agenda, please direct me to the right place.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. The next person I have signed up to speak, and again, you've signed up for 12G if you want to do citizen comments now, is Susan Bloom. If you will please state your name and address. And the timer's not running on the screen because, well, things change, but Colin's running the timer and it'll go off when, when your time is up. Ms. Bloom?
My name is Susan Bloom. I live at 109 Eleanor Lane, Bastrop, Texas, in the River Meadows subdivision. My husband and I are in favor of the Colorado Bend LLC. We prefer that the proposed perimeter road be eliminated from the proposal. We are worried that if it got built, that it would be a road to nowhere, that teenage parties, drug deals, dumping of old mattresses and washers and dryers would be there. And our, the residents that back up to that deserted road worry about burglaries from the back of their properties. We prefer that the studio build their four-foot berm with their 10-foot high fence right up next to our River Meadows subdivision property lines. The developer, Alton, has promised to maintain both sides of his berms and fence. Right now, in that proposed perimeter road area, there are lots of dead trees covered with vines that are threatening to fall over our roadway, Margie's Way. It is our only way in and out of our subdivision, which could hamper emergency vehicles coming in and out. If the studio developer is granted access to build his fence next to our property lines, all those trees would be eliminated. It would look much better seeing a nice maintained manicured berm and fence than dead viney trees. We want, we want to make it clear that the studio not to be allowed to use Margie's Way with any commercial vehicles and that it will remain blocked off a dead end at the end of Margie's Way. We are against having that property sold to any housing development. If 2,000-plus homes were built on that property, Lover's Lane could not handle all the traffic. Even when Lover's Lane gets widened, it will be too much traffic and a safety issue in case of emergencies could occur. Years ago, when it was brought up to sell that whole pasture for a housing development, the developer had to build a bridge across the river to access Rio Four. That was part of selling that land and that really hasn't been brought up. So, that should be brought up, that, that should be part of having another access if that gets sold to, to a property.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. You did good. I know it's nervous, but you did good. All right. Want to make sure I don't skip anybody. Sunday Thompson? I don't, I don't see her. I don't.
She centers.
Okay, so this is the confusing part. She, it says that she wants to speak, but her, I assume Garrett Thompson is her husband. His says, I don't wish to speak, I just want to send the stuff. So, council, since Ms. Thompson's not here, we'll make sure that all of council gets a copy of both of their citizen comments. So, you'll have a copy of those. And the last person I have signed up to speak is, and I'm, I'm hoping, George Piazza?
Correct.
Oh, yes. All right, if you will please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
George Piazza, 127 Eleanor Lane, River Meadows subdivision, next to the property you were just discussing with Ms. Bloom. I'm not going to repeat all her comments. When we went through some last hearings and the developer was giving permission to put in what was going to be then some kind of movie studio lot, one of the conditions was that there'd be no access from that property onto Margie's Way. Now, he's going to be proposing a different plan. I'm not here to speak for or against that. But already, he's put a gate on Margie's Way, giving access to that property. That's what I object to. So, if y'all are going to approve this, which I assume will happen, then I'd like it considered that there is no access from that property for any purpose onto Margie's Way. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And our city manager and our city attorney are taking notes. Thank you very much. All right, that's all the documents that I have. Is anybody else here signed up for citizen comments or want to speak on an agenda and they want to speak now? Madam Secretary, did I, did I get everybody?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I'm trying. I think I have people here for the, for our audit. You want to let them go first? Okay. How about 9B? Ms. Waldron, does that make you happy? Oh, I see a big smile back there. All right, we are going to agenda item 9B, receive the annual comprehensive financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2022, which includes the independent auditor's report presented by the independent audit firm of Belt, Harris and Peckichik?
Pahachek.
Pahachek. Think I'd learn it by now. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, as always, it's honored here to present your annual financial report. Over on page 17 is our independent auditor's report. Very pleased to announce it's an unmodified opinion.
Council, it's this docu, this big document that's at your desk.
Which is the highest level assurance that we can provide to the city council that all the disclosures required by general accepted accounting principles have been included and the financial statements are materially correct. So, that is exactly the type of opinion you want us to be providing tonight, so that that is great news. There is a tremendous amount of financial data within the report, as you can tell by the size of the document. If I could direct your attention over just a few key pages, but over on page 42 and 43 is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for your governmental fund types. Your general fund is presented in the far left-hand column, your primary operating fund. Total revenues for the general fund came in at $16 million, $50,000 or $60,000 for the year. Total expenditures came in at $14 million, $817,000 for the year, giving you a net increase in fund balance after transfers of $964,000. You began the year with a fund balance of $7 million, $177,000 and you ended the year with a fund balance of $8 million, $141,000. As you very well know, that financial rating analysts look at your fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenditures. They're wanting to make sure you have a minimum of approximately 30 days on hand. 60s would be good, 90 would be doing, pretty good. And so, the city's in a very good shape from a fund balance perspective in the, to general fund, as well as all the other funds are reporting high fund balances or adequate fund balances as well. And in total, the city's total fund balance for all your governmental fund types comes in at $18 million, $650,000 for the year. Over to your business-type operations, which is presented over on page 50 and 51. And your water and sewer, water and wastewater activities brought in a total of $7 million, $917,000 for the year. Operating expenses, including depreciation, were $5 million and $61,000. After taking into account non-operating revenues and expenses, as well as operating transfers in and out, you had a net change in net position for your water and wastewater activities of $2 million, $623,000. That's a positive increase, excellent news. Over in the Bastrop Power and Light Fund, you also had a positive increase of $764,000. And in the Community Impact Fee Fund, you had an increase of $848,000. So, all great news there as well. There is a letter attached to the very back of the report, two different letters. I'll save you a lot of reading. One is the required auditor disclosure letter. This letter gets a little lengthier each year as the requirements of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants talks about all the things that we were required to talk about the audit process, but the audit process went very smoothly. Tracy Waldron and her staff did an excellent job as always. And so, the audit process was very smooth. There's also a management letter and the management letter is where we would typically talk about findings during the audit process. There were none, none of, none of those types of items that we noted during the audit, but there is one forward-looking comment regarding a new accounting pronouncement that's coming up this next year. So, we just want to make sure that the city is officially aware of that accounting pronouncement that is coming up. But other than that, it is an excellent audit, great news as always. And again, staff did an excellent job. More than happy to entertain any questions the city council may have.
Council, any questions? Mayor Protem Rogers?
I would just like to say thank you and great job, Tracy.
Yay.
Thank you for the wonderful news.
And we'll make sure that the public understands that this audit and the good results is part of how we're able to keep good bond ratings. That's how we're able to keep costs down from when we have to borrow money. It's one of those really boring things that if you're a citizen, this is, this is one of the things that we actively pursue to make sure that we try to keep costs down. Thank you for your help and appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
All right, looking around the audience, council, I think our best bet is to go back to the quarterly report because I think that will let some other folks go if they are not choosing to spend the night with us. Ms. Creo, we're on item 7D, quarterly report.
We are, and I just, I just sent a correction. Our eagle-eye accountant found an error in the financials at a glance that we're going to go over. So, that's in your email box, but I've also corrected it on the screen. This is the quarterly one report that covers the period through the end of December. Sorry, Colin, I'm clicking myself, so I'm trying not to follow along. So, it is, it is a different format than your regular several hundred page. And as I've, I've been telling you, my goal is to give you a 50,000-foot level and as we march toward a dashboard, you can be able to check any one of those metrics at any point in time. This one is going to cover our financial status. It's going to cover those management projects that you guys harp on that are on your teams that we go over every single week. And I feel the heat on my seat all the time, so we'll go over some of those. We'll go, go over the ever-popular capital improvement projects and then we'll get an update from our partner organizations who, thank you for coming by tonight and spending a lovely Tuesday with us. So, as I said, our goal is to transition. Our, our financials at a glance, I know I probably scared you and I, at least I scared Drusilla when I showed the, the red really high with our debt service and our B P N L. Those were errors and they've been corrected. Our financials remain steady. We do have a little bit of a blip in our B P N L item that Tracy will cover later on, but she will, she'll go over the research of where we are at that point. And our hot funds, obviously, we are a little bit behind lagging in collections at this point, but anticipate that will correct itself.
One thing that I'll remind council and the audience is that we actively made the decision that although some of the organizations get their funding over the year, the Bastrop Opera House gets their money at the beginning so that they can reserve their scripts and do the things they need to do to be able to have a year-long program. So, that's, that's a known.
Correct, thank you. That's, that's a known deviation, yes.
That's why it's higher than the others. So, just, so it's not like, oops, we didn't know what we were doing. That is a very definitive, there are access to different scripts and stuff that if you don't pay in time, then you can't do them because they don't let the place happen within a certain mileage and that kind of thing. So, they're, giving them the money upfront is, helps us have a real good season at the Opera House.
Thank you, Mayor. So, into the investment report, we do have, we're pursuing a little bit more aggressive investment in a wide variety of our funds. The policy requires a certain level of solvency. Obviously, as interest rates continue to climb, we want to use that to leverage the ability to earn money in other areas. Our rate of return this quarter was a little bit higher than last quarters, but, or last year this quarter, but not a whole lot. We, we are still definitely down from 2,000's range of earning interest. Again, past the investment report, we will go into the ever-popular management projects. And just so the audience knows, these live on our board. These are the things that drive us as well as our normal everyday. So, the first one is we, we've continued to talk about our annexation plan and we continue to talk about those projects that want to come into the city of Bastrop in one way, shape or form, and that's usually done through a development agreement. The council is aware, the legislature has really curtailed our ability to annex. So, most of the annexation comes through voluntary annexation through a developer agreement. We had been a little bit behind in our annexation plans in that we were telling the developers we would annex at a certain point in time. We need to be a little bit more aggressive with that as we continue to plan and be able to extrapolate those numbers into growth in our water and wastewater utilities. So, we need to be better focused in those areas. We continue to move forward with agenda management. We are still relying on some rudimentary procedures, but we're, we're hopeful we're going to get the workflows done before the end of the year. I think we're almost there, but there are some critical components, like I want finance to be able to review any contract before it even sees the light of day to council to make sure that we are, one, in correct legal standing and two, that we have allocated the correct budget to do that. As we talked in our strategic meeting, a draft drainage master plan has been delivered. We're working through that internally. We, we understand the price tag and so before we bring it to council, we also have to bring forward a plan for it. for its execution and public consumption. Don't want to scare the pants off of everybody, but it is a giant number. We continue to work through our GIS system. That's our geographic information system. Texas A&amp;M, it says it completed 70% of the project, but it's my understanding they are now done. So we will be incorporating that information and we will be moving forward to fill a position that has remained vacant, that we were hoping to fill through partnership with ECC. But that position just becomes more and more crucial and critical as we continue our long-term planning. So we really need to bring that position forward. The other big-ticket item is our comprehensive plan update. As you know, that is the driving document to everything that we do. We need to be sure that our plans are aligned, and so we need to revisit that. And we do have a consultant onboard. Well, we're interviewing two consultants. And then we should bring a contract to the Counsel in the March or April timeframe. The old Iron Bridge Loop 150 corridor study. We've received a debrief from the RACE grant application. And I am told that Councilmember Crouch specifically asked what happened and why did it not get approved? And I was told they didn't make it out of the first two rounds of scoring. We scored low on safety because they needed direct data. And we scored low in the economic competitiveness portion. So we have resubmitted in January for the first round of a Tech dot Transportation Alternatives grant for 2023 instead. We are also in a dual path, trying to get some information from third-party contractors on alternative mean and method to make those necessary repairs without the super costly price tag, with perhaps money that we've already set aside. So our rate model for streets. You saw the preliminary pavement condition index, which we call a PCI. We've already begun consulting with some third-party engineers who will help us develop what our utility model is going to be for our streets. How much do we need to plan for maintenance? How much do we need to plan for complete reconstruction? And how much needs to be exacted from the development portion for new and complete streets? June of 2023 is at least an expected draft date. BEDC Shared Service Agreement and Policy. We will be continuing to discuss that in executive session. I'll await Counsel direction for continued refinements. And our Development Services Process Improvements continues. As I stated earlier, I do have a draft. It is my goal to put together a flow chart and some timelines so that Counsel can see the direct path forward to ease some of those pinch points. On your Council Agenda tonight is also your Corex Wholesale Agreement. We are, as we've talked about in our strategic plan, expanding in some areas where we must partner with other entities in order to be able to serve into what is our eventual wastewater treatment plant. And the same thing with Aqua. Water is the new gold. And so right now, we are dumping straight into the Colorado and in other areas. And if it is, it proves to be beneficial to our ratepayers, our residents, to reuse some of that water and resell it and get a lower rate, then we would love to pass that savings on. We continue with our improved coordination with BISD and the county. We are meeting monthly with both entities, sometimes with all of the entities altogether. So you had a revised 1445 in executive session, and on the agenda, we will bring that back. It is my hope that we can finally put that item to bed and move forward with that. We also have our coordination with the school districts that will continue to allow the construction to move forward. You approved that inter-local a few Council meetings ago. Capital improvement projects. 87% of wastewater treatment plant Phase 1, done. I would love to tell you it's further along than that. We've had some delays. West Side Collection System Phase 2, 62%. Transfer lift station, the design is about 50% complete. And these are the unsexy projects nobody's ever going to talk about. You guys don't care, but it's important-
They're my favoritest projects on the whole list.
It's important that when you flush, it goes somewhere.
Yes.
The Sims Borough, we spoke about that in executive session. And so we are at 7% of construction. Riverwood, we're at 98% of the engineering and design. And the cemetery improvements, we have an architect submitting a professional service proposal. This, the cemetery one will come forward again because as we talked about, they will need some assistance from the general fund for a short period of time. Detention Pond, Public Works Detention Pond, 60% at construction. Agnes Street, we continue to talk about. 25% of the design for the non-GLO and 25% of the design for the GLO. So we do have the segments that we talked about on trying to get the necessary right-of-way to continue that important improvement. Old Austin Highway, 98% of the design. We are working with the school district. We will be coordinating better with the school district. They will understand that as soon as school is out, we are going to put a shovel in the ground. Intersection improvements. We are conducting a traffic count. And so we are expecting a report also in March of this year. Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Revenue. We continue to do well over at the Convention Center. She's booked. It's very rare to get a day where we have any time available. So, good job, Kathy. Upcoming special events. So we've got the State of the City and the Mayor's Roast in March, in April. Obviously, we have our Easter and Spring Fest. In June, we have Juneteenth. And in July, we have the July 4th Big Bang Event. So staff is busy with our everyday work as well. Our Main Street Organizations. This is the Main Street Program. There's a big segment in here because they did a lot in this first quarter, a lot. The Heritage benches, the gardeners, the Master Gardeners Association, conjunction with Rotary on the bike racks. They did the cross mural work. So Candace has been super, super, super busy. This was the mural, "The Future Is Ours", that the Youth Advisory Council had helped come to fruition. Oh, Colin's clicking, not me. There's the bike rack and there's the mural. Sorry, Colin, I'm outpacing you. People are tired, they want to go home. There's the Youth Advisory Council. The Main Street. So the 90-day social media study with Civic Brands continued and completed. We had the Bastrop Area Cruisers and then the Veterans Car Show. So, or the Bastrop Area Cruisers hosted its Veterans Car Show. And really, I was very, very impressed with that event. I'd not seen that many people in such short a time period get together and disband without it being ultimate chaos. So kudos to the organizers and to PD for making that happen. Main Street continues to work with the Cultural Arts Commission on the Mini Grant Program. I believe we had some announcements at our last Council meeting. So I'm a little bit behind. Youth Advisory Council had its first meeting in, on August 29th. So the Council is working on a project for 2023, which will assist with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The Yak is really going to do some of the heavy lifting and the outreach on social media and in the community. And then the Cultural Arts Commission has grants ranging from 500 to 1,500. And so the Commission's going to review and announce the mini-grant recipients in the second quarter of 2023. We have some partner updates from Visit Bastrop, Lost Pines Art Center, and the Visitor Center and Museum. And Colin, if you would bring that Word document up. So Visit Bastrop, again, just continues to bang it out there. Definite totals, the annual goal was 28. In the first quarter, they were already at 12. Economic impact in Quarter 1, $1.86 million. That's not a small thing. That's not a small thing. We continue to, again, surpass what I think we needed to do. Our To Do continues to be the main driver on the website. And our top-performing pages, obviously, it was the Christmas timeframe, so the Lost Pines Christmas had 11, almost 12,000 views. The homepage, 8,800. Events page, 8,500-plus. Things to Do, 7,200-plus. And the Bastrop River of Lights, 6,300-plus. So people are definitely looking at Bastrop and what they can do here. We had 66 pieces of media coverage. So thank you, Susan, and Visit Bastrop. We move to our other community assets.
I'm sorry, before we go past Visit Bastrop, we true-up Ms. Waldron in April? Bring in a budget amendment in March. Okay, so we're glad to have that true-up. And Counsel, I know because we are seeing an increase in our hot funds that we would like the Visit Bastrop folks to know that if they find that they're needing more than the $75,000 that we gave them for hot funds, it's a really good time to ask. And in fact, they might ask so it can be a part of the budget amendment so we don't have to do one right behind the other. Counsel, you'll recall that we're the worst people to decide who should get money and how to judge that impact. And that's why we give it to the professionals that review the evaluation and make sure they've got the insurance and all of the things that they need. So since we'll be doing a budget amendment anyway, I just want to make sure that we're clear and get that all done at once. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no, no worries. The museum and Visitor Center, again, continues to bang it out. Year-over-year, over 1,000 extra visitors. This year, last quarter, they were at 3,000. This year, first quarter, 4,400. I visited the museum for the first time with my family over this quarter and blown away. Took my husband this last week. He kind of, we left him. I went to have wine and he stayed at the museum. That's how much he enjoyed it. So, thank you. Thank you for the job that you guys do. Bastrop Opera House, 2,000 in Quarter 1. It was a very cold winter. We had a lot of winter snaps. So I don't take anything from the Bastrop Opera House from going to 2,500 last quarter to 2,000 in this year. And then the Lost Pines Art Center, again, from 1,700 in Quarter 1 in FY '22 to 2,800, almost 2,900 in Quarter 1 in FY '23. So our partners are doing a bang-up job keeping Bastrop on the map. So the last piece is that Bastrop Opera House sold more than 1,000 tickets outside of Bastrop County. And those are folks who are coming outside of our area, direct economic impact, eating here, staying here, shopping here. So thank you to all our partner organizations who make Bastrop the best place it can be. And that is my version of the quarterly report. Do you have any questions?
Great job. Counsel, do you, I want to make sure for our partners if there's any information that didn't get discussed, if there's anything you'd like to share with Counsel. I want to give you the opportunity, since you guys are here tonight, for you to jump up to the mic while they're thinking of questions. Counsel, any questions or comments for the City Manager? Oh, my water was in front of your light. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Trying to follow the rules.
I know, sorry, sorry.
All right, so I have a couple things. City Manager, thank you from the bottom of my heart for reaching out to our EDC, I mean, the BISD and the county and trying to rebuild those relationships. We're all stronger when we work together. So I know it's always hard to try to rebuild something than the person going in there to get all the flack. So I appreciate you doing that. And also, you must have been reading my notepad about the electric fund.
Yes, yes.
She can see my notes.
Yes, I can.
And the other thing is, my hats off to all you community. I mean, Visit Bastrop, those are amazing numbers, Susan. And if I didn't love you before, I love you even more now. So great job for everybody. And I wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that they're doing.
It takes a village.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem Rogers. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing. I just wanted to, you know, every year that we get a report on what we're going to do and what the organizations are going to do and what the vision is. And then just to see it all kind of actually happen and you reach your milestones, I just think is a wonderful thing. And congratulations on being able to achieve those. And thank you for bringing that to the community. And again, I just want to thank you, City Manager. I'm just amazed by the amount of knowledge. I've lived here all my life and she knows more than I do about the city of Bastrop in a few months. And it just amazes me. And so I just want to tell you again, thank you for the good job that you're doing and being able to integrate your wisdom and knowledge into our little community to make it better. Thank you so much.
I love it here. You can have my head anytime you want to.
Yay, yay. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
I just wanted to piggyback off of Mayor Protem Drusilla.
Did somebody pronounce my name?
Rogers, Rogers.
Rogers. And just recognize the staff and all the partners that we have because those numbers were just outstanding. And for them to stay up even through all the, we're beyond COVID and stuff now, but through all that and then still have really good numbers and really good participation and great events on the Main Street stuff, it's just phenomenal what this kind of staff that we have and the time that they, and the volunteers put together for all of this. It's just a great reflection that we got our stuff together. So thank to you and to City Manager and to all of us for helping them do that. So thank you. I just wanted to piggyback off of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. I also like that you guys are all sitting together. It makes us, as Councilmembers, smile whenever the organizations are leveraging off of each other and not double-spending tax dollars. That is a very good thing for all of us and we appreciate that. Okay, we think you all are wonderful and you can go home if you want. We are moving to the next page. We're on Item 9A, Receive Presentation on the Unaudited Monthly Financial Report for the period ending January 31st, 2023. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So the January report, general fund's still very strong. General fund revenues exceeding forecasts 20%. Mainly the sales tax and property tax. The property tax will level off in February. And so we'll see that number come down in February, I'm sure. Other revenue funds, Impact Fee Fund, running short of forecast. Always keep an eye on that. Just the timing of the development. Always keep an eye on that, just the timing of the development. And then the electric fund, we've kind of touched on this, brought it up a few times. I was very surprised when our January billing was below forecast. But we did dig into the data. One thing we did notice was that we only billed through the 24th. The utility supervisor was actually working from home because it was because of the weather that we were actually doing billing from her laptop at her house. And so, when the reads were pulled, the date, so it's through the 24th. All dates will be billed eventually. So, the next time we do billing, it'll pick up from the 25th and go to whenever they cut it off. So, it was a little bit of a shorter month. That could make some difference, it's five days. So, it appears that the consumption was just less. We looked across all sectors and we looked across all accounts and it was just in general, less consumption. We base our forecast on historical trends, which is really tough in the electric world because it's never the same. So, just wanted to let you all know. Hopefully, that will level out as we go along through the rest of the fiscal year. All other funds perform positive to forecast. On the expense side, we've talked about the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. That is part of my budget amendment that will be coming forward in March. And so, we'll talk about kind of the plan to work through that. All other funds were positive to budget. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? May, Councilmember Crouch?
Oh, I didn't do my light.
It's okay. I caught the other one. She didn't make the full. You have the floor, Councilmember Crouch.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the impact fee forecast being low. Since I've been on the council, it's been low all but one report. And I think that it's just because of our development's not coming along fast enough to keep up with what we're forecasting, which is obvious because it's slow. And I, we haven't talked a lot about the ad hoc development group that's been formed and the recommendations and the things that we've been getting from that group and the citizens and the contractors and subcontractors and citizens. And I'm, I'm just, I want to commend Sylvia for helping put that group together and gathering all this information and sharing it with staff and then hope that staff and that group can stay together and help that impact fee forecast because it could just get faster and then that forecast would come full circle and we wouldn't have that shortfall.
So, I want to address that because there's, that has a two-prong, and I think that we forget one of the major prongs. It has a two-prong effect. The first is, is taking us a little bit longer to get the lines in for folks to tie onto because all of those executive sessions where we're getting right away, right, to install. So, that's, that's the first part. And the second part, yes, the process to get everybody connected. And I think we're, I think we're almost there internally to be able to bring something that I think everybody will agree on. But gotta get the line built. Gotta get those use agreements done. Gotta, gotta get that, gotta get it so they can connect on to it. So, I think we're gonna revisit some of the forecasting because budgeting is just that, right? We anticipated something to be able to have been completed and that's our bad because it's, it's not. It's taken us a little bit longer than we thought. But yes, it's a multifaceted approach.
Well, so, it's a project management conversation that everyone needs to understand that when the public, when we have to go to eminent domain, when all, we're spending money on that and that is time and money and all of that ends up going to the ratepayer. The water and wastewater is its own separate fund. And so, whether it's the ability to collect impact fees or the cost it takes us to get the system in place, it, all of that happens within the same fund. So, yes, we always need to be improving things, but it's very difficult to predict what someone is, whether someone's gonna cooperate or not cooperate and how much they want for their property and how long it takes to get a possession and use agreement so that we can actually build the line. And so, some of those are out, outside of our ability to control. So, I want to acknowledge that I know you guys are doing the best you can in project management, but sometimes it's kind of like a freeze. There's some things that are outside of your control.
They are. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that as we get to the point of having that dialogue, that those lines do belong to the ratepayers. They're not, they're not ours, right? Everybody that pays into them owns them. And that we come to decisions fairly quickly. If we can't get to an agreement, then we need to move forward rather than letting it languish. So, I'll own what's our part. But yes, we have to, we gotta, we gotta get it going. We gotta get it going.
Excellent. Councilmember Plunkett, I think your light was on the longest.
Well, I want to echo and say how much I haven't been able to do this in a little bit, but thank you so much for what you're doing for the development process. That's the reason I'm sitting here. And you're, you know, there's not a lot of concrete things we can point to right now, but the process is getting going. And I can, I can see that and we talk about it every week. And it's, I really appreciate what you've done.
Well, well, thank you, but to keep it on impact fees before the attorney says we're like off topic. Really, truly, from, from my perspective, having done the development process for as long as I have, I, I think I told the mayor the other day that it feels like Pigpen is walking and there's this big cloud. But really, the, it's only about that much of a layer that is related to the regulatory framework of the code. And the rest of it is, is us huffing and puffing through process. So, we're gonna get there and I think we're gonna get there in less a painful piece than everybody may have been led to believe in the beginning. So, getting there gets us back to a place where we're able to, to meet budget expectations and we're able to install and have people connect and, and create our own little economic engine.
Yes, and I just wanted to ask Ms. Waldron if, do we have an update on the fraud situation that we can share?
On the what? On the fraud, recouping funds?
Anything like that.
Yeah, we're not anticipating recouping. Everything's been filed, so it's kind of out of our hands.
So, the budget is for zero and anything we get will be gravy?
The budget is for fixing that fund to include the loss.
Right.
That's what you're saying. So, we're gonna absorb the loss and then if we do get anything back, that'll be gravy.
Yeah, it'll go back in the fund. But right now, we're just trying to balance out the fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
On that same subject, or unless I don't remember it coming, do we have that policy change that's coming?
Your mic's not on.
Ms. Waldron did send it to me. My bad for not sending it to you. I will send it tonight.
It'll just be coming up to be approved on the, one of the.
Your, our very next, next special meeting, yes. Yes, my bad for not sending it.
The next one's like five pages already.
Yes.
It is, told you.
All right, thank you for the.
We were ready, we were ready.
Big job. All right, Ms. Waldron, last chance at Ms. Waldron. Questions on the financials?
I'll be back.
She'll be back, she'll be back. All right, we are done with 9A. We've already taken care of 9B. That brings us to 9C, receive annual racial profiling report from Bastrop Police Department. Chief Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Let's see. Okay, all right. So, this evening, we'll be presenting the 2020 Annual City of Bastrop Police Department Racial Profiling Report. Each year, the chief administrator of a law enforcement agency is required to submit an annual report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and to our city council. In 2022, the City of Bastrop Police Department had 3,811 traffic stops. This presentation depicts the context as they relate to the driver's gender, the driver's race or ethnicity, reason for and location of stop, search conducted, contraband discovered during the search. Of the 3,811 traffic stops, they either resulted in a warning being issued, a citation being issued, a warning being issued with an arrest or a citation being issued with an arrest. As it pertains to gender, we stopped just over 42% of our traffic stops were female and just under 58% of the traffic stops identified as male.
Is that scientific proof that women are better drivers?
I would be biased, but I would say yes.
All right, I'm just checking, just checking.
As it pertains to race and ethnicity, Alaska native, Native American was just under 1%. Asian Pacific Islander, just over 1%. Black, just under 11%. Hispanic or Latino, 32.1%. And white drivers were just under 55%. The, out of the 3,811 traffic stops, 16 of those, the officers identified as knowing the race prior to the stop. And this may have been because they identified the person as having a warrant or the person may have driven in front of them prior to the traffic stop. The reasons for our traffic stops are moving traffic violation, pre-existing knowledge, vehicle traffic violation and violation of law. Moving traffic violations came in first with just under 64%. This would be something like speeding. And vehicle traffic violation would be 33.8%. And this would be attributed to something such as vehicle light, lighting. The location of our traffic stops, 53% of them were conducted on city streets and 46.9% of them were on state highway. Of the 3,811 traffic stops, 143 times we conducted a vehicle search. The types of searches are either consent, contraband in plain view, incident to arrest, inventory or probable cause. As you can see, probable cause was the greatest with just over 76%. Of the 143 searches on vehicles, 120 times we located contraband. The types of contraband are alcohol, drugs, other, which would be something like drug paraphernalia, currency, weapons or stolen property. Overwhelmingly, we discovered drugs 76% of the time, followed by alcohol. And then finally, compliments and complaints can be made to the City of Bastrop Police Department either online or in person. And all feedback, positive or negative, is welcomed. Any questions?
Great job. You did a good job. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of questions, just for knowledge.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I put my old lady glasses on. On, on your reasons for traffic stop, what is violation of law? If it's not a moving violation, I mean, how do you know if it's in the car? I mean, what's, what does that term mean?
Actually, let me go back here.
Yeah, that one.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So, what is your very last reason, the violation of law? So, what, if they're not doing a moving violation and they're not, their car's in good shape, what is the violation of law?
So, the violation of law, it could be no seatbelt or something, something of that nature.
Okay, just here.
Yes, ma'am.
And, hold on, I have another question. So, on your, the searches of the vehicle, the search type, the reason for search is inventory? What is that, what kind of reason is that?
So, sometimes if we make an arrest on a traffic stop, let's say it's a warrant arrest.
So, you arrested somebody inventorying?
We will inventory the vehicle and, and mark it on the toe impound sheet. So, that way, if there's anything of a larger item in that vehicle, we can document it was in the vehicle before it gets towed.
Okay, I just curious what those terms meant.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have comments, questions, trying to understand.
Okay.
First, let me say that, again, I've been here all my life. And I would say in the last two decades, I've, I've passed some officers or seen some officers and even called officers on occasion for different things. And kudos to Bastrop Police Department. I've never seen anything get out of, gotten a hand. I actually see them kind of interacting with the people, laughing, joking, trying to keep the temperature down. And then, of course, taking care of what they need to take care of. But kudos to the Bastrop Police Department because I, in every instance, I've encountered them with other people, not me. But I've always seen them more, be very just conversational and try to keep the temperature calm, take care of what they gotta take care of and do what they need to do. So, a lot of my questions are just kind of clarification questions. Like, it says that you issue a warning with an arrest. How, if you're arresting me, where's my warning? I'm getting arrested.
So, the warning could be, let's say you ran a stop sign and then we issue you a warning for that stop sign, but then you have a warrant. So, we're still gonna arrest you for the warrant, but you may get a warning for the actual stop.
Got it. I know. It's like, dang it.
Councilmember Plunkett said, good news, bad news. The good news is you're not getting a ticket for running the stop sign. The bad news is you'll be going to jail on the warrant, so. Sometimes that's the kind of days you have.
So, you answered the question that I had about, how do you know what the ethnicity is prior to the stop? I was wondering if it was like via license plate run, but you answered that. Pre-existing knowledge. So, on reasons, you have pre-existing knowledge. Is that just because you, you're looking for that person? There's an APB, is that what they call it out on them? What is pre-existing knowledge?
For, oh, so basically, if, let's say I interacted with you this morning and I know you don't have a driver's license and then I see you driving two hours later and I know you don't have a driver's license and I pull you over for knowing that you don't have a driver's license, that would be pre-existing knowledge.
Okay. All right, let me see. Okay, what might prompt a search? I mean, obviously, if you see contrabands sitting in the seats. But outside of that, what might institute, why, why would an officer say I need to search this person?
So, if, let's say, let's say I pull you over for whatever the traffic stop is and then as we're interacting, I smell an odor of an alcoholic beverage and it may be overwhelmingly strong. At that point, we would continue with the investigation and it may lead to a DWI investigation. So, that could be, that could just be one example of it.
Not like just because they have, they're shifting or their eyes are going.
Typically, no. Now, if we make a traffic stop, we can ask to search your vehicle and you can say no. But if there's nothing in plain view or there's no probable cause to search the vehicle, then we typically do not search a vehicle unless, unless we're provided consent.
Okay, thank you. So, you, you explained what other was on types of contraband. So, the other point that I wanted clarification on is in regards to the race and ethnicity. So, if I read right, and I may have read wrong, these 3,000, what are they, 3,811 traffic stops, if I read correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I read that this, these numbers only reflect citizens that were stopped, residents of Bastrop, City of Bastrop proper.
That, that's not correct.
Okay.
So, specifically, the traffic stops, when, when I was analyzing the numbers, we actually only, out of 3,811 traffic stops, we only pulled over 1,559 people that identified as living in the 78602 area code and that could be city or county, which means that we had over 2,200 traffic stops where these individuals identified as living outside of the city limits or the City of Bastrop or the County of Bastrop. So, they could be from Houston, Austin, but the majority of them were not 78602 residents.
I'm, well, I'm glad to hear that, both pieces. But yeah, I don't know why, I read it and it made, I read, something I read made me think that it was only pertaining to city residents. So, I'm glad to hear that that is not the case because I would think the numbers would be way off if you're only counting people that lived in the city and not counting others.
It, it, so what it may be is typically when they, when we submit these reports, they compare it to the fair, I believe it's called the Fair Road Standard. And, and that takes the census of whatever city you're, you're looking at and they compare the numbers to the census within your city. We're consistent where our population is. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the population, but I did analyze the data to make sure that we were consistent with our traffic stops for the city, which then led me to asking how many traffic stops were actually made on 78602 residents. Just because the numbers weren't apples to apples at that point to me. We may be comparing to the census, but we're not pulling everybody over in the city limits.
And we don't have that data, right?
For the.
And our, that data was not part of our package, correct?
The, the population data is, is not in here, but I can get it for you if you'd like it.
I would like going forward, and you know, you can, you know, email it to me unless all of the council wants to see it. But I think that that's important. I, I think it's important to know how many of those, those stops were city residents traveling through. I think it would be good to have that information because it helps us identify trends as well. I also did not, I don't think, and again, correct me if, because I'm, I hate math. I hate percentages, I hate anything with a number in it. So, I may have just be reading it wrong. But I do, I know, I do. So, what I, what I am gathering is that this is, the percentages here are just based on the total stops.
Yes.
The information that I also think is missing is based on population because if there's only 10% of a certain ethnicity group in our community and 8% of that group is getting stops, what are we missing? What are they missing? What we, and so, we didn't get that data and I'd like to see that because these percentages could mean a whole different ballgame if you're looking at a whole ethnic group that's 90% of them are getting stopped for one reason or another. So, it wasn't included in this data, but I also think that it's important. And I looked actually on the Texas website at this report to compare that example report with our report on point. Thank you very much. The only thing that it did suggest was those percentages. Population estimate of reporting area, percentage of female persons in the reporting area, males in the reporting area and then percentage of race and ethnicity. So, I would like to see that on future reports.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And I can send it to you. I do have it and I'll send it over to everyone.
Let me just make sure I don't have any more to read.
I was gonna say, Councilmember Lee, you still have the floor.
One more thing. So, also on the Texas website, there was a section on like training police officers on how to be non-biased during these events. One of them was like a lesson objective and it, it outlined here elements of a traffic stop which would constitute a reasonable suspicion. And I kind of felt like some of these were still profiling, not even just racial profiling in general, just profiling someone. One was signs of long-term driving. Well, sometimes I drive long ways and I'm just tired and I've been driving a long way. way. Vehicle is rented, driver is young male, 20 to 35, no visible luggage, even though the driver is traveling, driver was reckless or cautious, that's obvious, and then use of air fresheners. So my question is, are we really using these as examples of why we should pull someone over, especially number seven? Because I thought that there was a, I know that there were some states that were out, they were trying to get rid of the use of air freshener because of Dante rights.
So we don't use any of them to pull them over? Not one of them?
That's what I wanted to hear. All that?
And so, and I believe I know what you're talking about. There's actually a training in which these are just recommended things to look for. However, none of them are probable cause for a traffic stop, so at least the city of Bastrop Police Department does not use any of them to pull people over.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you so much for easing my mind, and I plan on reading through the actual packet that you guys gave us on your policies. I just kind of ran out of days and time to get that much in. But thank you so much. I was like, she's going to feel like I'm a lawyer and I'm giving her an inquisition, but really, this information is for me to understand it better and for the community who's watching, so that they know what exactly you're looking for, what type of traffic we have in Bastrop, and what's happening. So thank you for answering.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Lee is satisfied. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, I think you were the next one.
Actually, I was just, on one of the questions, the report that she was going to ask for, because we're, the county and the city all have the same zip code, is that going to be able to, it's still going to just, pretty much just be anybody in that zip code, really?
Yes, ma'am. It's done by zip code.
Yeah, since we're all got the same name, the same zip code, we all live in the same thing, so I was just making sure. Thank you.
There's a number of people who don't know if they live in the city or the county, and there's certainly, I don't know how the police officers will keep up with that. But I think really, you're just wanting data and just share what you got, and we'll compare.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is that it?
Yep.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to, you know, having a business in the location that it is and the nature of the business, we have quite a bit of interaction with the police department, and your folks always do a really good job, very professional, whether that's investigating a crime, we get asked for a lot of surveillance footage, and again, everybody does, everybody's really done a great job and been very professional with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett, and you're good? All right, Councilmember Kirkland.
Good evening, Chief.
Hello.
So I have a couple of questions. Do you have similar statistics? These are all about traffic stops. Do you have them for arrests as well?
We do have them for arrests. I don't have them at the moment.
No, no, that's fair.
But yes, typically, we.
Quote them for me right now, please.
Well, last week, no.
No, but I'd like to see that as well. And I mean, it would be things like occurrence of arrests, reason for arrests, you know, similar breakdowns to things that we have in here, but.
It won't be identical, but we can provide you as much as I can.
Oh, that's fair, yeah.
Reference the others.
And then the second question is similar thing, but for use of force statistics, frequency occurrence.
So with the 3,811 traffic stops, we had zero uses of force.
Well, outside of traffic stops.
Now, outside of traffic stops, we do, every time we have a, we call them use of force, response to resistance, every time we have it, we have documentation of it, so we do have the numbers, which I can provide to you.
Thank you. And then the last one's a question, when was the last time Bastrop PD had to fire their firearms in a use of force?
Goodness, way before my time, I would say. In recent memory, I've been with the department since 2007, and I don't believe anybody has ever fired their firearms since then. I can double-check for prior to then, but.
That's adequate, thank you.
But.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland. Great job, chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great job. And when you, and nobody's expecting you to have this tomorrow morning, but when you get the information together, if you'll just send it to everybody, that just makes it a whole lot easier, and then we've all got the same information at the same time.
Yes, sounds good.
Thank you very much, and thanks to your entire department. We very much appreciate it. All right, counsel, it is 7:59. Do we need a short bio break, or keep going? All right, we're going to keep going. The good news is, we have done citizen comments. We're going to go to the consent agenda. I'm pulling item 11E, because I don't know how we can approve consent for awarding a contract, and we didn't tell you who was going to get the contract award. So we will pull 11E, and then we'll do it immediately after the consent agenda, because we do know who got the award now. All right, so I'm pulling 11E. Counsel, does anybody else want to pull an item that's on the consent agenda? I see no lights. Does anyone in the audience want to pull a consent agenda item? I see no hands. Madam Secretary, if you'd please read the consent agenda less item 11E.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 14, 2023 regular meeting, February 21, 2023 joint city council and parks board meeting, and February 23, 2023 special call meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-01 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of ordinances by adding new section 1.02.005, termination of inactive campaign treasurer appointment, providing for repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-28 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Isaac Moreno Place 5 of the construction standard board as required in section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Item 11D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-03 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of ordinances Article 1.04 regarding annual verification of attendance and residency for members of boards, commissions, task forces, committees, and advisory bodies, and providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Item 11F, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-32 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11G, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-31 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund, reaffirming various policies and procedures required in conformity with the Civil Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, happy to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're now going to go to item 11E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-29 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to award an engineering service contract to provide engineering services for the city's 2023-2024 Community Development Fund application and project related to engineering services if funded, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron.
Hi. So as I stated in the staff report, we had a very tight schedule on this particular item. The bid closed on the 25th, and so we received six submittals. Those submittals were scored by a team of different scorers, and half an associates was the engineering firm that was selected, and so that's the name we're going to fill in on the resolution.
So counsel, if someone is so inclined, they would be asking to approve resolution 2023-29, awarding the contract to half an associates?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. All right, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. Item 12A is consider action to approve resolution 2023-30 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, recommending, designating Bastrop Post Office, located at 1106 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas, as Sergeant Major Billy D. Waugh Post Office. The reason this wasn't on the consent agenda was because I didn't know if Johnny Sanders was going to show up or not. He was the person who made the request. If any of you have not read Hunt for the Jackal, you need to. Mr. Waugh was just a phenomenal person, and you got the opportunity to see that in the packet, and I think we are very happy to ask Congress to please dedicate the post office in his name. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I just had a couple questions. So as this hopefully approves, let go along with the post office. Let's say we grow big and the post office moves, would it be stuck with that address, or would it stay with the building of the post office?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I was just curious, you know, because, you know, we're growing, so maybe the post office grows. I was just making sure it would stay with the post office wherever it may happen to move. I was just curious.
I think it stays with the post office.
I don't think it would, I was just curious.
I think we have to say where it is now, and I think then if you move the new one, you would move the name with it.
Okay, I was just curious, making sure it would stick with that person.
Counsel, was that it?
That's it, that was my question.
Councilmember Lee?
So I.
Your mic's not on?
My mouth is being. So I did not know, we had our own real-life Tom Cruise, Mission Impossible. Oh, my God.
We do.
I was asked.
It's appropriate that his name is Billy.
I know.
Bad A.
Ethan, so I was asked by Johnny Sanders if I, this was something I'd be interested in, and I was like, of course, Johnny, yeah. Then I went and actually Googled it while I was reading my packet, and Jesus Christ, if you're ever going, remember that phrase, if you're going to clean a toilet, be the best toilet cleaner you can be? Well, he was the best military service person he could possibly be before or during his service in the military and after. So I just think that this is a wonderful thing. I'm excited that he is from Bastrop. We have a living legend that will receive his flowers, hopefully, while he's still living, and I'd be honored to make a motion to approve this item, to rename the post office.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Excellent family, great, great, great person. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Counsel, on item 12B and 12C, we're going to go into executive session, and then we're going to come out and vote on those, but I know we're going into executive session on a leftover item from your first executive session, so for right now, I'm going to skip them, so that we can get the other stuff done. So on item 12D, consider action to approve resolution R-2023-27 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop River Company, providing for a five-year lease of a .52 acre portion of A11 Bastrop Town Track acres, 5.1 city park, located in Fisherman's Park, with an option to renew for three additional two-year terms upon mutual agreement, authorizing the city manager to execute said lease agreement on behalf of the city, and declaring an effective date. Counsel, we did discuss this, it was listed for executive session, and I believe that we are not going to make a decision on the new lease, but Mr. Jobe, did you want to speak to what we are going to do, or?
Yes, ma'am. There were some amendments that we discussed in executive session, it had to do with an escalating scale for the rent over five years, and you were talking about a 30-day extension. So I think that's the motion that we need to make sure that Mr. Harrell can continue his use of the park until we finish this up by May 7.
So for the public to know the conversation, and if counsel is so inclined, they might consider making a motion for a 30-day extension. The reason we're not discussing the lease is because we want an opportunity for city staff to work with Mr. Harrell, and then we will bring back the lease that everyone will be able to review in public, but there's no point in discussing those points if we don't have them resolved. So I'm happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, motion to table the agenda item, but also provide for a 30-day extension to his existing lease, and then bring it back to us after further discussion based upon our discussion in executive session.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Counsel, you are approving a 30-day extension of the existing lease, and you are tabling the motion of considering this new lease, and staff will bring it back based on direction they received in executive session at the next most appropriate meeting. Are you clear on what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're on item 12E, consider action to approve resolution 2023-33, revising the agreement for subdivision plat regulation in the city of Bastrop's ETJ in Bastrop County, also known as the 1445 Agreement, providing for repeal and providing an effective date. We are not going to take this, this is going to be tabled for tonight or polled either way, and we'll come back at the next meeting, and we are also very close, and we want, the city manager and I want to thank both the county engineer and Commissioner Beckett for all the hard work we've done together, and we are very confident we will have an agreement that will make everybody happy and be better than the one that we have now. So is it best to get a motion to table, or can we just pull it? So it's pulled, we're not talking about it anymore tonight. We're moving on to item 12F. Counsel, you have a new document that had some minor wording changes. It was on your, at your place when you came into the meeting tonight. I would encourage you to take a look at that. Item 12F, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-02 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordnances Article 1.04 regarding annual work plans for city boards, commission, task force committees, and advisory bodies, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Councilmember Kirkland.
Thank you, Mayor. The copy that was here on the dais, I had some concerns with the ones in the packet, but this one addresses them, so.
We aim to please, Councilmember Kirkland, does that mean that's a motion?
Yes, ma'am, motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I have a second from Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Lee has a discussion. You have the floor, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Turn on your mic. Thank you. So I have just a couple of questions. So the deadline for the work plans is February 1st. Well, we are past February 1st, and currently, the only board working on a work plan is DEI. So what is the deadline now? And I, having asked that, I'd like to suggest, because this is going to be a new process for all the boards, and DEI is brand new, and so I'm kind of figuring it out, and I think they're almost there, but the other boards are going to need probably an adjustment period as well. So I was thinking on, and my suggestion would be to let them all kind of, we don't even have a template yet, right? Maybe spend the rest of 2023 getting that template together, letting them start kind of diving into it, and then by February 1st of next year, 2024, is when everyone will present their work plan. My other suggestion was, how much time are we going to give them to work on their work plans? Because what I don't want is them to get bogged down for six months trying to do a work plan instead of actually doing the work. And I think it's important to remember, these citizens are volunteers, they're part of these boards because they're excited about, or passionate about what they're doing on these boards. And so to put a lot of rules and regulations and restrictions and micromanagement on them is not always going to be the best thing, because they're doing this for joy, and that can sometimes suck the joy out of it, and passion out of it. So what timeline are we looking at for this first run? And then I'd like to maybe say in October, set a standard of, in October, every board should start working on their work plan, and go from there, and however you guys work it out. But those are just my observations.
So first item, yes, this is a future for, a future goal for boards and commissions, and yes, the plan is February of next year for those work plans to be brought in. In terms of working toward a work plan, it's really going to depend on when the council adopts your budget, because you're going to adopt a budget this year that has some goals and considerations in it. And so this year's going to be an adjustment period for the boards, as we work with the It may be that a council liaison says, our board only needs one or two things to do. We may have another board that, Planning Commission, for example, the council says, no, you've got about 10 things we want you to work on in conjunction with staff, and this is how we'd like for you to execute it. So, when I talked about a collaborative effort the other day, that's really what I talked about, on how do we make it work for everybody so that we're all sort of marching and rowing in the same manner? But no, it's not meant to be onerous, but it is meant to keep things in a certain path. So, for example, if the residents have said, we don't want a tax rate increase, then if the Parks and Rec Board, for example, is marching toward a Taj Mahal building that's going to require a seven-cent increase or something that would require voter approval, eh, probably not what we want to be talking about. So, it's really just meant to keep things in a framework of operational goals and priorities.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. You're good?
I'm good.
All right, she's good. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, I like, you know, everybody not turning it in until next February, which I think that was our original idea. And I do agree with turning it in in February, because a lot of the commissions, we don't put them in effect. You know, the mayor suggested them, what, in September 1st of October?
Their terms all start on October 1st with the fiscal year.
Right, so the members have to get in there, start talking before they can actually work on this work plan. So, and I believe when we were talking about making a work plan, it is very kind of generalized of what direction you want them to go. I don't think it's, at least in my mind, we weren't thinking of, here's your 10-to-do list where they have to dig these holes. It's really just trying to make sure all the boards and commissions are working in the direction that the council would prefer them to be working on. So, I agree with the things that the city manager said, so I'm good. That's it.
Councilmember Kirkland, your light went on and then went off. You're off now, but I'm, okay. I want to make sure everybody gets their chance. All right, so everybody's happy, and I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Councilmember Lee? All right. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Item 12G, as we've already spoken, that is also being pulled off, and that will be on the agenda for next week. And that brings us to item 12H, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-34 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the ability to enter into a wholesale wastewater agreement with Correx East Texas LLC, attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I realize that this is a format for a document that is due here tonight. It wasn't quite finished at legal. So, what I did want to point out, even though you may not vote on this document tonight, at least we get started talking about it. What's really important to point out here is I've got some criteria that we're going to establish, some minimum flows, the quality of the wastewater. When you say quality of wastewater, most people think that's crazy, but the bottom line is, it has to be...
It's not crazy.
It has to be of a domestic strength. So, what that means is it's something from your household, and it's not, it doesn't have metal in it or things of that nature that impact the plant.
You can't randomly have hazardous materials that we can't treat at the plant. You've now destroyed a $30 million plant, so it's really important.
Correct. It is important, and there are things built into our ordinance, so if there is an accidental discharge of something like that, we can recover that, we can recoup that fee, they have to pay the fines, things of that nature. So, that's what's going to be built into this disagreement. It'll also be transferable with council's permission. It allows us to do retail service in Correx CCN. And what you see on the map, when I talk about CCN, that's a Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. That's essentially the area that we're allowed to serve here. And what you see in the, I think it's going to make this point here, what you see in the light, I guess beige color there, is actually the Correx CCN, and what you see in green is the City of Bastrop. So, what this has to do, since we bump up against each other, and there are areas where we can actually gravity-feed their wastewater flows into our wastewater plant, it makes a lot of sense for us to add additional customers, help lower and stabilize the rate for our current residents and our current customers. And I think the goal here is to take these high-level items that we have here that we'd like to see, and hate to say this out loud, but the rest of it, where I didn't comment, is pretty much just legal jargon. Sorry, Alan. But it's all the wherefores and what-ifs, and essentially, we have some real opportunities here to partner with everybody, and it does help with land use regulation, it helps with adding customers, it stabilizes the rate, and so with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Did you say you did not have a...
I certainly think you can. It does have the terms.
So, Mr. Jobe, what you're saying is that what council has before them is the terms, what they don't have before them is the actual legal documents. So, if council wants to wait till they have an actual legal document?
Correct.
Or if you're in agreement with the terms, it's up to whether or not you want to approve it tonight?
Correct. If you're in agreement with the terms, we can absolutely have Mr. Creo execute this later, or...
Or we can talk about it at our meeting next week.
We can talk about it again, yeah, that's right.
So, Council, looking for somebody's light to light up and let me know what you think we ought to do. Councilmember Kirkland?
I think we should push until we get a contract.
Excellent. All right, so I'm going to ask, Council, does anybody have objections or concerns with any of the terms that were included in the packet tonight? I'm seeing none, and I'm seeing a city manager that wants to say something.
I do. I just, we have a time is of the essence portion, so if your next meeting is going to be March 7th, don't mind bringing it then, but we do have a public hearing related to the Boring Company that would be directly related to this item that I'm hoping to have resolution for before that date comes up. So...
Councilmember Kirkland would like to make a different comment. Councilmember Kirkland?
No, no, same, just, no, a question. What date do you have for that?
So, we had in mind March 7th.
No, he's asking what dates the public hearing.
March 21st.
March 21st.
Okay, got it. I have a conflict on March 7th, so that's why I was asking how...
Ooh.
There's also the opportunity, if there's no substantive changes, you agree with the terms.
Are you out for the whole day, the whole day and night, or can we move it to a different time?
Night, like 5:00 to on, we could do it earlier in the day. Or other days. But we hadn't talked about that yet, so that was just...
Yeah, okay. Do you want something just in case, because then it's going to be spring break week, then it's going to be the public hearing?
You're giving me heart palpitations is what I'm telling you.
That's what I'm looking at. So, could council say that we agree to terms and maybe we get, you have access to the final document when it's prepared, or?
I wouldn't object to that. I think, well, where did our lawyer go?
Key the lawyer. Cue the lawyer.
The one time he steps away.
Yeah. That's how important you are to it.
So, Alan, the question about this item is, when Councilmember Kirkland wants to bring it back till we have the actual document clean and ready, my concern is we're bumping up against a timeline for TCQ that our plan is to hopefully resolve everything with Correx so that we can bring resolution to the Boring Company at all in terms of what we can do to solve that 969 problem. So, I'm having a little bit of heart palpitations. We've got the next couple of meetings, and the TCQ date is March 21st.
So...
And what's the question?
Well, the question that I had is that, like, let's say that, you know, we voted on agreeing that this term sheet was acceptable. Do we also have to approve a contract, like, in order for it to be valid?
Can we agree to the terms and authorize the city manager to sign the contract that matches the terms?
Yes, you can. There is a draft contract in existence. We provided a draft. Assistant City Manager Joe provided additional information, so we're incorporating that into a revised draft. So, a contract does exist. If council approves the term sheet and authorizes the mayor or city manager to execute a contract consistent with that term sheet, it will be valid.
Well, then, I would like to make a motion that we approve the term sheet and give the mayor the ability to sign said contract that matches the term sheet.
Please say mayor or city manager, because sometimes it's different people.
Mayor or city manager.
All right, and now your heart palpitations are okay with that motion?
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland?
So, I second if he's amending his first motion.
Well, I was still talking, so...
Well, how can I second it if you don't shut up? Well, I was trying to agree with you, but I'll wait till you're done, I guess.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying since I was stating my own motion, I don't think I need to amend...
Yeah, he didn't, we didn't get a second and move on. He just said, I wouldn't be okay with the lease, so. All right, so, Council, what you have before you tonight is a motion from Councilmember Kirkland to approve Resolution 2023-34, approving the terms and authorizing the mayor or city manager to execute the contract that matches those terms. That is before you with a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Everybody clear what they're voting on? Ms. Creo, you're cool with that motion? Mr. Borquez, we're legal with that motion?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
All right, Council, I did not forget 12B and C. We are going to go into executive session for those items, and we are also going to go back into executive session for item 2B. Mr. City Attorney, I believe I can say Section 551.071 for consultation with an attorney for items 12B and 12C?
Yes, Mayor, and 551.074, personnel matters also.
What he just said, 55, did you get that, Madam Secretary? Okay, so, Council, it is 8:26. We will be going into executive session on item 12B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-23, approving the appointment of Carolyn McLeiman, J.D., is presiding municipal judge, Bastrop Municipal Court, City of Bastrop, and approving a contract to provide services attached to Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. And we will also be discussing item 12C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-31 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a request for qualifications to be issued for one or more associate judges in the municipal court of the City of Bastrop, providing for a repealing and providing an effective date. And we will also be going over item 2B, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a support services agreement and policy for the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and related matters. It is 8:22, and we are in executive session. Okay, Council, thank you. It is 10:15, and we are back in regular session. We're going to take up item 12B first, consider action to approve Resolution 2023-23, approving appointment of Caroline A. McLeiman, J.D., is presiding municipal judge, Bastrop Municipal Court, City of Bastrop, and approving a contract to provide services attached to Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Council, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously, and congratulations to Judge McLeiman. We're on item 12C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-31 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a request for qualifications be issued for one or more associate judges in the municipal court of the City of Bastrop, providing for a repealing and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously, and we'll be taking the steps with Ms. Waldron to get